This meeting of the Reading Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners is being held remotely on Zoom and streamed live on RCTV and YouTube. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment. And at the discretion of the Chair on items in the official agenda, we ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair and that all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, acting in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board or responding to comments. Upon once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment and ensuing discussions. Commissioner Pacino, myself, will be the Board Secretary tonight again.
Phil?
Yep.
Phil, can I interrupt for one moment? I think you have a prompt on your screen about the recording.
I've got what?
Do you have a prompt on your screen about recording?
No, I do not.
Okay.
Is there something going on there?
No, I see it on YouTube. But...
Okay.
I don't...
Is it off now?
Nope.
All right, you want me to log out and log back in again?
I don't necessarily know that it's you, so I guess we'll just have to go along.
Okay.
Kathleen, I had one come in and said this meeting is being recorded and I hit that, but that's...
I just...
I think everybody gets that.
I can continue, it's what I did. So, I don't see it on my screen.
Okay.
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 All right, very good. It says we... I gotta ask all remote participants to identify themselves. I guess that's part of the law. Now, this could very well be our last Zoom meeting. I understand the Governor's Order expires on June 15th. And so our next meeting may have to be in person under the open meeting law. So, this could very well be our last Zoom meeting at this point. So, I ask that I'm gonna identify myself. I'm Phil Pacino, Senior Commissioner, as I call myself. Bob, you're next.
Hey, I'm Bob Coulter.
Dave?
Dave Talbot, Commissioner.
Yeah, John?
John Stempak, Commissioner.
And Marlena. You're muted. You still...
Yeah, Marlena Vita, Commissioner.
Okay, very good. We have staff, we got Colleen, we got Greg, Colleen O'Brien, Greg Phipps is here, John McDonough. We got Wendy here. We have Hamid here also. Erica's behind her screen at this point. We have Vivek from the CAB here also. And we have John Rogers, a citizen participant. Okay, very good. So, I've kind of covered the public comment. Let's go to public comment, Citizen Advisory Board, anything you want to update us with on Vivek?
Yeah, so we had some topics that are a subset of what you guys are gonna cover. So, I wouldn't want to repeat what they're gonna say. So, I'll just say that we covered some of the topics and we approved some of them that came on your agenda.
You know, it's still everybody's thunder, huh? Okay, I don't see any liaisons to the RMLD Board here. I don't see anybody with the selectmen of the Finance Committee here. So, with that, we'll go to public comment at this point. Any public comment? John?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. John Rogers, 39 Tower Hill Road, North Reading, Massachusetts. And I, just two points, two quick points. One, I wanted to say thank you, Mr. Pacino, for opening up, for suggesting that the public be allowed to engage a little the way we used to. And if we're getting off of Zoom, I guess we'll go back to showing up in person. But thank you very much and thanks to all of you who made it happen for this meeting. Second point, looking forward to Greg Phipps' presentation about the customer choice, the renewable choice. And I like what I saw on the slide, I think you're bringing up a lot of important issues. I should say I'm here on behalf of Grace, the Greater Reading Alliance for Clean Energy. And I, the one thing I'd like to offer or suggest, I think having principles before getting into the details of that. I think, you know, taking a step back and coming up, maybe you already have these, but having the Board come up with some principles around that. Certainly, you know, ease of implementation for RMLD being one of it, but also ease of customer acquisition or customer retention is another. And Grace is happy to provide some of those maybe for the next meeting. So, that's all I wanted to say, thank you and thank you. Really appreciate that.
Well, let's move on to the first item. We have the Accountants here, Zach and Andrew are here to present their findings on the Audit Committee. I attended, just a quick update, the Board Subcommittee on the Audit met with the Town's Audit Committee. Both committees voted unanimously that the recommended the Board that they accept the audit. I believe it was 5-0 of the Reddington Reading Audit Committee and John Stempak and myself on the Board Subcommittee 2-0 to recommend. So, with that, Zach, I'll turn over to you to make your presentation. Or Andrew, whoever's gonna make the presentation.
Okay. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Andrew Gordon and I am the Audit Supervisor on the Audit of the Reading Municipal Light Department for their calendar year 2020 Audit. And presenting with me tonight is Zach Ventross, who was the Manager on the Audit. I will go through the financial statements to highlight certain account balances and trends. If at any time anyone has any questions, please feel free to stop me and we can address those at that time. I want to make a quick note that the financial statements are being presented on a comparative basis for the first time in a few years. And the lack of presenting on a comparative basis over the past few years was due to both the department moving to a calendar year-end December 31st and as well as the implementation of GASB 74 and GASB 75. And you might hear me say GASB a couple times throughout the presentation. And that, when you hear me say GASB, that stands for the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. Before we get into the report, I feel it's important to give everyone a takeaway from our presentation tonight. And that takeaway is that the department had positive operating results, a well-funded OPEB trust fund, and the department did not receive a management letter for their 2020 Audit. Can you please now turn to the first page after the table of contents? This is the first page of the Independent Auditor's Report. And for the 2020 Audit, the department received a clean opinion, no exceptions, which is the best opinion you can receive from an independent audit. This is the same opinion the department has received in prior years. I'll now have you turn to Page 3, which is the first page of the Management's Discussion and Analysis. On Pages 3 through 7 is known as the Management's Discussion and Analysis. And this is essentially a narrative summary of the department's results of operations. This section also discusses major financial areas. Instead of reading this to you, can I please have you turn to Page 8, which is the Statement of Net Position? We will discuss the same topics there that are discussed here in the Management's Discussion and Analysis. So, here on Page 8 is the Statement of Net Position, which is essentially the department's balance sheet. And the first line item I'd like to go over with you is about a third of the way down the page under Non-Current Assets. And that is the line item titled Capital Assets Net of Accumulated Depreciation, which had a balance of $81,505,000. This was an approximate increase of $2.4 million from the prior year. This increase consists of $7.3 million in additions, less depreciation expense for the year totaling approximately $4.7 million. The next line item I will go over with you is about three-quarters of the way down the page under Non-Current Liabilities. And it is the line item titled Net Pension Liability, which had a balance of $12,540,000. This was approximately a $2.5 million decrease from the prior year. And to go over the net pension liability, this is the department's portion of the total unfunded liability of the Reading Contributory Retirement System, which was measured as of December 31st, 2019. RMLD's proportionate share is 28.35%. The retirement system is 78.24% funded. The average in the Commonwealth is about 66%. So, the Reading Contributory Retirement System is higher than average. It is important to note that RMLD has set aside $6.6 million to fund future appropriations to the retirement system. It is also important to note, though, that these funds cannot be used to reduce the liability per GASB standards. And as I mentioned before, the decrease from the prior year was approximately $2.5 million. And this is primarily due to the retirement system's investment results coming in greater than anticipated. In 2019, the investment results, excuse me, the investment results came in approximately $10 million more than anticipated. And the department's portion of this benefit is approximately $2.9 million. Going back up under Non-Current Liabilities, the next line item, oh, about three-quarters of the way down the page under Non-Current Liabilities is the Net OPEB Liability. And to better, or the balance as of 1231, as you can see, was $7,166,000. And this was about a $72,000 increase from the prior year. And if I can have you go to Page 44 of the financial statements. On Page 44 is the Required Supplementary Information for the Department's Other Post-Employment Benefits, which essentially is the health insurance and other healthcare benefits that the department provides to their employees. And if you take a look at the top of the page under the 2020 column, you will see the total OPEB liability was $11.6 million. And the next line item down, the Planned Fiduciary Net Position is $4.5 million. So, that $4.5 million is how much the department has put away thus far to fund that total OPEB liability. And if you go a little further down, you will see that the department is 38.62% funded. Just to give you perspective of where that falls, our average town or city that we audit, we see between 1% to 10% funded. And on average, the other light departments in the Commonwealth are anywhere between 20% to 40% funded. So, the department is in good shape in terms of funding the total OPEB liability. If I can now have you go to Page 9. Page 9 is the Statement of Revenues, Expenses, and Changes in Net Position, which is essentially the department's income statement. And the two line items I want to go over with you are first, towards the top of the page under Operating Revenues, the Electric Sales Net of Discounts, which had a balance of $86,894,000. This was a decrease of approximately $2.5 million from the prior year. And if you go a little further down under Operating Expenses to the line item Purchase Power, which had a balance of $57,292,000, which was a decrease of approximately $3.7 million from the prior year. And the decrease in these two line items was primarily due to the price of power, which decreased from 2019 to 2020. And this decrease in the cost of power was passed along to the customers, which is why you see a decrease in both the electric sales and the purchase power operating expenses. So, that concludes my presentation and really the items I wanted to highlight. And just to go over my takeaway from the beginning, and that was that the department had positive operating results, a well-funded OPEB trust fund, and finally, we did not issue the department a management letter for the 2020 Audit. And I'd like to thank Wendy and Colleen and all of the RMLD staff. They were well-prepared, their records were in great shape, and as usual, the department was very timely in their responses to our requests and questions. So, thank you very much to everyone involved.
So, Andrew, I know with the Audit Committee, you addressed a conflict of timing on the pensions between some timing with GASB. Do you want to, can you address that again here, please?
Sure.
Yeah.
So, this relates to the, specifically the OPEB liability. So, essentially what is happening is the corresponding actuarial valuation that the department's actuary uses or creates for us in order to determine the liability is based as of June 30, 2018. And per GASB 75 standards, the requirement is that that valuation is, should be, or has to be within 30 months and one day from the financial statement date. So, in other words, it needs to be within 30 months and one day of December 31st, 2020, which it was not in this case. And however, per GASB 74 standards, the actuarial valuation only has to be within 24 months of the financial statement date. So, therefore, RMLD's financial statements are not in accordance with GASB 74. And we spoke with the actuary and determined that this would not have a material impact on the financial statements. And therefore, we did not qualify our opinion for this year. So, currently, we've been working with RMLD, or RMLD and the Town have their OPEB liability determined as of the... Oh, I think I got a little lost here.
Okay.
Want me to jump in, Andy?
Yeah, I just got a little lost there for a second.
No worries. So, ultimately, what's happening is, as Andrew described, technically, the valuation isn't in accordance with Governmental Accounting Standards Support Statement Number 74. Like Andrew had said, we did speak with the actuary and determined that it wouldn't have a material impact on the financial position for RMLD. I have spoken with the actuary, Wendy, the auditor for the Town, and Boyd, who's also an employee of Melanson. And in trying to start the conversation to ensure that this doesn't happen again into the future, the possibility of having separate valuations for the Town and RMLD was thrown out. The actuary did have some concerns there, but we're in the process of working through them. I did reach out to the actuary, Phil, after our meeting for the Audit Committee a few weeks back, and I have not heard back from them since.
Wendy, you want to add anything here?
Yes, thank you. I did also send an email after the Audit Committee stating that we will take this action item on the RMLD and we will make sure that we get together with all the respective parties, being that Seagull, the Town, and Melanson, as was suggested, to see if this was the right direction to move in. We also noted that we had had a separate actuarial results or actuary study in the past. I'm not exactly sure, maybe about six years ago. Prior to that, we had done our own study, separate from the Town, and it worked fine. I also reached out to the Town Accountant again today and did not hear anything as far as, you know, an ETA on when we're gonna get the results of the new actuarial study.
Okay. Yeah, because I know the Town Audit Committee to review the Town Reading Audit is the 17th of this month. I've been invited, so we have a topic that may come up at that point, too. So, okay, any Commissioners' questions at this point? All right, if not, I will, let me just ask one more question that I thought about. Because today was the A&amp;A Conference that I run. We had a discussion about leases. I understand GASB has got some proposal out on leases. Are we gonna get affected, is the department gonna be affected on that?
Yes, that's gonna be GASB 87, Phil.
Yeah.
And that needs to be implemented for the department for, I believe, the next fiscal year. I've talked about it with Wendy. I don't think it's going to be an overly complex or cumbersome implementation for the Town, or excuse me, for the department. Wendy is going to accumulate all of the either operating or capital leases that the department has. And at that point, we can make a determination whether or not it would have a material impact on the financial statements and then move from there determining whether or not the department needs to implement that GASB standard.
Okay, very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do I have a motion from somebody on to accept the audit? John, are you there? You're up.
So moved, yes.
Okay, let me just read the motion. Moved that the Board of Commissioners accept the 2020 Audit Report from Melanson, fiscal year dated December 31st, as presented. On the recommendation, I'm gonna add to this, in the Town of Reading Audit Committee and the RMLD Board of Commissioners Audit Subcommittee. That's the two things to be added to that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and moved, seconded, further discussion? All in favor, Mr. Pacino, I?
Mr. Stempak, I.
Talbot, I.
Coulter, I.
Vita, I.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, so let's move on to the next item. Thank you, Andrew, thank you, Zach. You know, you can always stay if you want, but, you know, I'm sure you...
Bruins are on, so I think I'm...
Okay.
Thanks, so I thank everybody, have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you, everybody. All right, let's move on to the report on the Citizen Advisory Board meeting that took place early tonight. I guess, John, you were covering that for Bob tonight?
No, Bob came back and covered it as well.
He got it, okay.
Yep, I came back. So, just as Vivek stated, they had three votes. They voted unanimously to accept the Gravity Contract and also the New Production Environment, as well as the conference for this upcoming NEPA Conference. So, that was the high item. They did have some questions from the public. And Dennis, Jason, and Vivek were in attendance.
Okay.
And that's all.
All right, great. So, we're up to, Colleen, you're up to your report.
Okay, thanks. So, some community events first, before we get into policies. Virtual Electric Vehicle Workshop was held on April 27th, attended by 75-plus people. Some of the community TV stations are broadcasting the event, if you want to check it out. It was such a great event. The user roundtable was very informative and giving us feedback. We're probably gonna run another one, probably towards September when we have National Drive Week. So, we're looking forward to that. As well, we're probably gonna have another heat pump roundtable as well before the end of the year. The High School Art Contest Virtual Award Ceremony was held on May 12th. That went very well. Thank you to John and Phil for helping attend and giving out the awards. You will see the winner on the front cover of our annual report, which we're still estimating to get out before the end of June. The RMLD participated in Burbank YMCA's Healthy Kids Day on May 22nd, provide electrical safety info to the kids. Virtual Electrification Presentation is gonna be held on June 7th at 2:30 in partnership with the Wilmington, Reading, and North Reading Libraries. What does that mean? We have approximately 33 registered?
We're getting an echo. Go ahead. We're getting an echo from something.
Yeah. Oh, God.
Dave, you got something on the background, Dave, on your...
I don't, people sometimes say that happens with my computer, but there's no noise here. I'll have people try it.
Yeah, because you're, okay, go ahead, go ahead, Colleen.
If it keeps happening, maybe everyone can go on mute. The RMLD, what was I gonna say? The RMLD will be at the Community Table in Wilmington Farmers Market on June 27th from 10:00 to 2:00. We'll be giving out information about the RMLD and our programs. We, I've already talked to Bob at the CAD meeting about coming in next week for a Photoshop.
Whose dog was that?
I thought public comment was over.
Go ahead, Colleen, again.
Disruptive tonight, sorry. The annual Shred the Peak press release is going out tomorrow. Greg and I and Joyce were working on that today. Just, we're probably gonna make a little clarification that, I mean, we've kind of covered the Shred the Peak as being the overall program, although the PDR is really for commercial industrial and Shred the Peak for residential, and we'll make that clarification on that tomorrow. That's really all I have for community updates at this time.
Okay, go on to NEPA.
Okay, so the NEPA Conference is coming up. And in accordance with policy, I need to ask for a vote for permission in addition to that, to find out who from the Board might be attending and to make sure that everyone follows the Policy 5 on travel. And Erica and Kathleen can help out with that. So, with that, I'd like to ask for a motion for me to attend.
Okay, so I want to make the motion? I'll read what the motion should be, and somebody can just say it. Moved that the Board approved Ms. O'Brien's Travel 2 in attendance at the NEPA Annual Conference to take place August 22nd through 25th, 2021, at the Western Portland High Review in Portland, Maine.
Second.
Okay, you actually made the motion, John.
I did, thank you very much.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? If not, all in favor, Mr. Pacino, I?
Vita, I.
Okay.
Mr. Coulter, I.
I heard 5-0. Okay, I do intend to attend, so you can mark me down as being intending that. It's always a great take because it gives you a chance to network and talk to other Commissioners and Managers about, you know, what they're doing, how they're doing it. So, I recommend it to everybody. And Portland's one of my favorite cities, too.
If I can just add, though, if you are intending to go, please make your reservation at the hotel. More concerned about that than, you know, signing up with NEPA, but the hotel rooms go quick, so.
Yep, I know. I didn't realize they'd even scheduled it yet, so, okay, very good.
Mr. Chair.
You got the review of the next one there, Colleen, is that yours, too? Review of the Board of Commissioners' Meeting Agenda Format?
Phil, I think Bob had a question.
Well, just to this group, if you can't make the whole time, is it worth it for a day? From your experience? If you can't attend multiple days, if you can't, you know, is it worth it for a day?
It depends upon, you know, usually the big days, if you come in Sunday, usually the big day is Monday. That's usually the big day is Monday on that. And usually Tuesday, it's only a half a day, and usually they have either some sort of tour that they poo-poo on, or they have the golf tournament that afternoon, the golf tournament. So, you know, it's usually worth, if you come in on a Sunday and can win one day, it may be worth it.
Yeah, it's quite interesting to probably attend at least one of them to see what the other representatives, who they are. And they usually have very interesting topics as well, not things that we always agree with. Not things that we always agree with, but it's still interesting.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
Soon as the agenda comes out, we can, I can pass it along. The next one was just to, to bring up a discussion about the agenda format. I know you know, it got, we, we changed it a little bit when we were going through all the training sessions in order to get through those complex training sessions on policy thirty. Phil has kind of changed it back today. I, I just wanted to see where it was going to land because it does impact the way Erica or Kathleen will, will you know, discuss taking in questions and, and giving out invites. But I think if we're going to be meeting in person is probably a moot point, but just wanted to bring that up to see what.
Yeah, so any, any thoughts? I mean. What were you thinking, Colleen, in terms of any changes that you, that you think of here?
Um. I've been to a couple of legislative meetings where they hold comment until the end and they go through a chat and they write all the questions down in the chat and then one of the chair and the vice chair read the questions at the end. I've seen all different kinds done. I thought that went very, very well. That was the T, TEU Committee. So. I, I think that worked well. I also think that public comments, if the comment is going to be about like, for example, what Greg is going to be talking about, that maybe we save that public comment until after Greg is done, because a lot of times we were asking the questions upfront and then most of the answers would have been through Greg's presentation. So, but again, if we're going to be meeting in person, it probably will be.
All right, maybe, okay. All right, I don't see any particular than allowing the public in. I don't see any particular, anything, anybody else got anything they want to bring, talk about or change? If not, let's go to the next one then. Next item, Colleen.
Okay, so. I was going to recommend that if we were going to meet towards the end of either the end of June or the end of July, that we could have a separate session to discuss the general manager goals like we did last year, where we dedicate kind of, you know, an hour specifically on the goals of of the company and the directions that we've been taking, how the staff is doing, what you'd like us to, to do more of. And I think it just deserves some focus time, like, and I thought it went very well last year and I, I'd like to request that we do that again this year. I know a good chunk of the year has been, is gone. I did send out the goals of what I thought. I still think that, you know, we've managed to achieve portions of all of them. I think those were the goals that are on a similar track. I did send out another email to add economic and social justice due diligence to our power supply. Greg's going to talk a little bit more about that. We're going to have an internal procedure on that. And as well as the renewable and non-carbon choice programs, making that part of part of a goal. And so I think between what I sent to you on, let's see, May nineteenth and adding those two extra. I think that gives us a full discussion of some main, main topics of focus. And I think that, you know, I, I was in on the, listening to like the town managers' goals. I think the ones that I've listed are pretty, they're pretty focused compared to other manager goals, so. Things that I think are very important for this company and, and want to see us succeed in.
So do you think we should do this before the end of the month or what's your, what's your timetable here?
I just think before, it doesn't matter. I just think if we could just have a separate meeting like last year for an hour.
Separate meeting, yes. Absolutely, so. Maybe we can have Erica, Erica send around some dates we can all agree on.
Okay.
Try to get it by the, before the end of the month, if we could.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
If I could comment, Phil?
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I, I think the we, we had originally set it up here maybe two years ago, maybe three, that we were trying to do like this on a quarterly basis, review the general manager's progress and how things were working. And inevitably, things didn't go as planned. I mean, COVID kind of turned everything upside down. But I think if we could come back on that kind of a schedule, it'd be very good to do because everybody's informed and everybody would know what's, what's happening. So I would recommend that if we could do that on a quarterly basis, it'd be great.
Okay. Yeah, so I think, you know, that's probably a good idea. If we schedule the first one for the, toward the end of June, the next one will be then toward the end of September. And then December, I think that's an excellent idea. Okay.
Is it, can you still get an echo from me or can you hear me?
Yeah, it was coming from you, Dave. I don't know what's going on.
Yeah.
Is it okay, is it or not?
You sound terrible.
Yeah. You sound, you sound garbled.
If you can hear me, just a couple of quick comments that I agree with Colleen, I have a meeting, you know, preseason kind of special meetings that this, the monthly meetings are packed with things and also with John's comment about quarterly. We're not talking about policy nineteen right now, right? That's coming up later.
Yeah, correct.
The only other thing I'll throw in there is that, you know, obviously we're going to, you know, we'll, we'll check in on the goals quarterly and then annually, but the, the evaluation is also based on kind of everything that, that happens in the year, not just the half a dozen goals or whatever. So that's just to make that explicit that you know, it's not only the six things or ten things.
Good. Bob?
So. If, if we do have suggestions, how would we communicate those? In open meeting law, should we just put it as an email? I, I guess if you, we don't want to deliberate outside of open meeting, but if you have a suggestion for a goal, how could we, could we send that to everybody and it's not a deliberation prior to the meeting? Because sometimes maybe we can get a little headway prior to. But I'm just interested in a suggestion and how, how we could do that.
Yeah, I mean, I think you could probably do it as an email and just put in not for deliberation, then, you know, the other commission should not respond to it at that point. And, you know, that kind of gives you an idea and you would, it's definitely, you know, CC the department on any email that you send to anybody, so the department has a record of it at this point. We should be very careful. I don't know if you read about the selectmen with their problems with the open meeting law with emails going back and forth between three members of them, so we have to be very careful on that. So.
Good point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
We can also do it during this meeting potentially. I know it's not quite on the agenda, but here we are. Up to you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Okay, very good. All right, so policy nineteen, I think is up next. Colleen?
Okay. So everyone remembers a couple of months ago, I put policy nineteen through because we had to remove some of the OPEB language that was in that was conflicting with policy eight so that we could get the OPEB trust signed in over to the town so they could work on submitting it into print for investments, okay? And then coming back to policy nineteen to kind of do more of a scrub, a regular legal scrub and also to update it so that it reflects a little bit more on on how we, we're actually operating things. So Kathleen or Erica, are you sharing the screen?
Phil?
Yeah, Bob.
Quick comment. Yeah, that, that, that version with all the changes, that, I, we didn't get that. But that shows red, that shows changes. We got a finalized version and then we received one that, that, that was completed, but one that didn't show actual changes. It just showed a red line, but it wasn't in red print. See, it kind of had to go through and see what the changes were, Colleen.
Yeah, we kind of, yeah, we kind of. We kind of figured that out today. When you open it, you can see the red lines, but then when you, when you bring it up to, in view, Erica, maybe you can explain this. But the red lines go away.
So it's a weird function of the document and I think because it was sent through our lawyer and was protected that when you open it, it's weird. It will come up and if you preview it, you can see the red lining. However, when you touch it, put it on your desktop, try to save it, anything like that, even print it, it reverts to a different type of kind of lining where you can't see that clear red strike through, which we found out today. But the version on the screen that you should see now from Kathleen should be a little bit clearer.
Do you want to blow that up a little bit?
Larger?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm getting old, what can I say?
And while you do that, I just had the same issue and I couldn't tell what, what exactly the changes were. This is a very important policy because it's about how, what we do, you know?
Well, Phil, if you want to, if you want to, Phil, I can just kind of go through the highlights of the changes and we could vote it next month if you want. Because like I said, nobody emailed me back to tell me that this was happening. And it, this is how it looks when I'm looking at it, so it's we only looked at it, it only came up different today when Erica was trying to print it out. Otherwise, this is the way I see it and was not thinking that's how everyone was seeing it.
I might suggest, I'm sorry. I might suggest that we, we table it so that people can see what the actual changes are from what it was. And I mean, I agree that it was felt it's an important document and we should know what, what all we're voting on and changing.
But yes, I would agree with that.
Do you want me to go through just the highlights, Phil?
View of that. Give us a high level view. I mean, you can review it in detail and vote it in next month, so. Go ahead, Colleen, Colleen, give us a, give us a, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm just going to go through the very high ones because once you do see the changes, you'll be able to get the smaller points. So three, the second paragraph is just clarifying open meeting law. Erica, if you want to go down to number five. Number five there is clarifying the virtual remote and executive session. We can go down to four, eight, three. We're just going to stop there for a second because I know that Marlena had sent out an email about attending Meme. So if the board wants to discuss that and appoint someone to attend Meme meetings, this is where A three would come in. There's no change there, but it is something that I highlighted in a reply if we want to keep going down. All the way to five C. Okay, so five C is, I had kind of talked about this last year or the year and a half ago when we switched over to calendar year and I said, okay, well, I would be willing to go to a calendar year, but it doesn't align with my contract. And we, you know, we did it anyways, which was fine, but this just kind of clarifies it so that they all dovetail together and give us enough room so that there's nothing out of misalignment. So if you want to go to the next page under D, right there at the top. This is just an outside services update. We just clarified it. I mean, we've, we've given outside services on legal in, in other engineering services, we do it as part of the budget. We're just going to continue to do it that way and just clarified it. If, if something is legal in executive session, it talks about that as well. If we want to go down F, the only reason why I wrote comments, it says the board will hear complaints, concerns, just from a positive standpoint, we changed it to comments. H one. H one I changed because the board was responsible for providing information to the town meeting and I'm not saying that wasn't done. Phil may have been presenting that as part of the town audit. So I changed it to what, what I actually do because I'm not sure the board was doing a presentation. So every year I do an annual presentation to the Town of Reading. We go through the financial, the financials are sent out to everyone, everyone in town meeting, and then I go through the highlights of like the last eighteen months. And then I go to each of the other towns and do something similar. So I changed the language to reflect that, unless you'd like to put it back, so. Number two, or number three, oh, sorry, go back up. Back, right there. Three was just to clarify the transaction facilities agreement and the power supply under policy thirty. And then if you want to skip through to K. K is more of just a board, it's just clarifying the board attendance to different conferences. There really wasn't much of a change there. And then if we want to go to the next page, there's a lot of red lines there, but it really is just kind of a summary of other policy elements and it's just a lot of red lines because some of the sentences just were not complete sentences. And it's basically about ethics in dissemination of information, et cetera. It's pretty straightforward. So now that you can read the red lines, it should be pretty easy to see what, how it's been upgraded. And then the last thing that I did is I kind of took what was integrated in as the committees and I made it an attachment called Attachment A. So that's the only other changes. It was integrated before. And if we go to Attachment A, so we just cleaned this up. And, you know, just reiterating the committees that we had. So there was a GM committee and we dissolved that, so that got taken out. And now we just do my evaluation and goals in open session. So it was kind of revisions as such, those that had already been removed. I did add, Phil, the sub-audit committee because that was never in there, so it's the one audit committee board and a backup. And then the joint committee payment to the Town of Reading. We looked into that. I looked into that with Chris. We went through all of the twenty-year agreement. It wasn't in there. There was some emails that went back and forth and you know, we, we left it in as an advisory and who was on it. It was, it was kind of interesting when we started that town payment and then we kind of went to the board because ultimately the board is responsible for voting on what the town payment is. So I thought by changing it in this manner and making it advisory, it reflected more on, on what the law is and the language is and, and how we actually executed that last change. So those are basically the highlights. More of just a large cleanup and consistency. If there's any questions, otherwise, right, we can wait until next month and we'll make sure that I'll have Erica check with each one of you and make sure when you open it, you can actually see the, the changes.
Comments from the commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I have a question about Section seven, letter G. Where I just didn't understand that the board and its members shall not contribute in any form to civic charitable benevolent or other similar organizations. It sounds, in any form, sounds like you can't attend nor contribute funds. I, I don't know what kind of charitable organization one would not contribute to.
Okay, well, this goes back a ways now. Basically, as I remembered correctly, the discussion that may have taken place, this may be almost twenty years ago potentially, too, I'm sorry to say. This was ruled that this was not legally to do. That the commission was, could not give ratepayers money to charitable organizations. I believe there was a legal opinion that came out on that. Because we used to support the farmers market that was up in North Reading for a long time. And the, we had, there was an objection and with legal opinion said we were not legally allowed to do that with ratepayers' money, if I remember correctly.
So I guess then you're talking about funding something, but it says in any form, so I just thought it maybe also meant we couldn't attend, say, said farmers market? Because that would be supporting it? Contributing? I don't know. Doesn't matter.
If somebody read the text so that I can read what this is about. I can't read this.
Yeah, so it said.
Make it a little bit bigger. Erica, can you make it a little bit bigger, Erica, please?
A little more.
Seven, yep, going down.
So which one is it now?
Roman numeral seven.
Okay.
G.
General colon in executing its responsibilities. To the RMLD, the board and its members shall, and then go to G. Not contribute in any form.
Yeah, I, I see why you're, why you're flagging this because I, I see why the RMLD wouldn't and why the board wouldn't spend or, you know, public money, ratepayer money, but it says members up top, it says members can't contribute. To civic charitable benevolent or other similar organizations. So why, why couldn't we as individuals do this?
Right. That's all. Just the wording is awkward, maybe.
Yeah, I'll, I understand the point. We're, we're not allowed to as, as a company contribute to any five oh one C charitable organization or anything like that. So I will clarify that. Thank you.
Yeah. Good point.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go Bob, go Bob.
But one, one thing I had written here on, on that, on the bid. I, I know that, that had come up previously, but where where, well, my opinion. That, that's a charitable organization or? Hey Dave, I think you're, can you go on mute?
Yeah.
So I, I wonder if how, how that will come into this, this part of the policy because if that is deemed a some kind of charitable benevolent organization, unless it's a nonprofit. And I know, you know, I, we're a property holder inside that bid area. So how, how this, this might conflict with that, that statement or letter G might conflict with that unless we put a you know, unless otherwise, unless otherwise directed, some, some caveat there. I, I, I don't know.
Bob, we're not by law able to be part of the bid. That's, I, I'm not sure if you.
That, that works as a property owner inside that area. I can't how that, that you're, we're a property owner in the organi, in, in that, in that area. I, I, so if someone says we can't be a part of it. I think that's incorrect. I don't think as a board we should, I, I, I personally don't want to accept that because I, I don't think it's a good decision for us. As, as RMLD, because you should have say and what somebody wants to do in that, in that space. So I just, again, I, I, that's one comment I, I, I put against letter G that on top of other issues.
The, the way that the RMLD can contribute to those type of economic development is through the bottom line. So for example, that island at the end of Ash Street that says that this is taken care of by the RMLD. That is done with bottom line funds. We're not allowed to spend above the line funds on that, that. So the pilot in lieu of payment tax to the town is the money that would be appropriated in order to create an economic development, if you will. So I met with the town and explained to them that we want to support this, the concept of it, but our economic development support has to be in the types of programs, like if the bid is really looking for electric vehicle charging stations, like to be in downtown because they feel like that would improve economic development, then we can create our programs as long as the money that we're given is directly related to our business under the statutory laws. So I mean, I can get a legal opinion on that. If, you know, I mean, I'm telling you what it is, but I can have it in writing if you'd like. There's other ways that we can contribute, but it can't be to a five oh one C by law and it can't be in, in the ways that are inside of a bid, but there are other, other ways to accomplish similar enhancements for economic development.
I, I understand about other parts of the town, but when it comes down to the Ash Street area. That's, that's where I, you know, I think it's important because that is a, a, a target of so not being a member of the bid and if somebody might be dictating or have plans for your property that you're not engaged with. But I, I understand what you're talking about. What I'm speaking to is just definitely the Ash Street corridor for economic development. I, I think that that's where it becomes imperative that that Reading light become, any, any discussions about that area, you do need to be engaged in because that that, you know, that's your own, that's your own land. So that, that was my concern.
Right. Um, maybe at the next meeting, we can do a presentation that discusses economic development of the land or the buildings on Ash Street. As opposed to a bid, they're completely two different things.
If they are, then, then, then that would not be relevant. G doesn't act it, but. Okay.
But I, but I can do that at the next meeting and, and send some more information out on that.
All right.
Thank you. All us, of small things and I don't know if we can extend, propose edits offline for the next round if, if I may. Can you guys hear me okay?
I can't hear you.
You can't?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I'm just putting back up to the, what the goal set is the paragraph that you wrote about goal setting and the board about performing its evaluation against the goals. That's all good and it's in line with the issues we made. I think it needs a sentence that says what, what should be obvious, but it should be stated that, you know, the review would, would need to account. And all of the duties and responsibilities that fall under, you know, the general manager's responsibility. I mean, it would be like we would ignore everything else except the six objectives. So I think it needs a sentence saying it, it's the totality of everything, including the goals that results in the performance evaluation. And I also needs, it, it, it doesn't ever say like, how is it that we're rendering the, the evaluation, like we used to have this form and we, we threw it out, I think for good reason. But now we have no, it doesn't say like, what do we do? There's no new form. I do think we should maybe have a system where we send in some, some, something written that's part of the record or is discussed at the meeting. So that's all. And I, I would propose to send a couple of suggested sentences for you all to consider for the next meeting. I mean, I note that we didn't really do an evaluation for twenty twenty. We just came in and voted a raise. We didn't do a written evaluation. So partly, I think, because we didn't have a, really a real process in place. It's easily fixed. I'll, I'll, if, if that's okay with all you, I'll send a couple of sentences around it.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. Okay.
And I had another question that I, I'm embarrassed a bit. I haven't read through all these edits, but does it somewhere say like what our powers are in terms of contracting and bids and voting? Like I know some things we vote on, other things get done by the manager etaterally and I, I should know exactly where that line is, but clear here. And I'll, I'll read it diligently now that I have all the edits visible, but when does something come to us for a vote and when it not, you know?
I think it's section five B. Objectives and policies governing RMLD. I'm not sure.
My own basis, it's all super clear and I'm just not.
Not really. Actually, not really. It's not about power purchasing.
Well, that, that's something.
I'll take a look at it.
Get back to us on that and send, send some, you know, send up some suggestions.
Okay.
Because we're not going to vote on this anyway tonight.
Yeah, exactly.
More of a high level review. All right. We ready to move on? Greg, I think you're up next.
Good evening. Kathleen or Erica, if you want to throw up the slides as they get those ready, just three topics tonight. The first one is going to be another power portfolio addition. As you know, we are, as these come up, I was kind of giving out lineup. We're going to talk about these three topics. We, as you guys know, we are proactively, we continually proactively look for non-carbon power supply additions and opportunities to our, our portfolio. So I've got a third hydro that I'm going to review and ask supportive. The second thing we'll talk about is the renewable choice. We're going to pick up where we left off last time, just some additional research that we did based on our discussion last time. This isn't a recommendation, but a quick update. And then I probably will just do two or three quick points on that last slide, which just talks about some of the economic drivers. That basically is just context and background for our ongoing discussions in terms of of how we think about the broader economics of, of power supply. So that'll, that last slide will be pretty short and sweet. There's good stuff to look at afterwards. So if we go to the next slide, please, Kathleen. So this opportunity, as you know, the past two sessions, we have presented one in Connecticut, a second one in New York, and this is the third hydro power supply opportunity. Currently, until we execute contracts on these three, our power supply is just under eight percent of our portfolio. We'll be presenting going forward, the, the growth forecast in terms of what the load's going to look like. If we, so with the two that you have already approved, that'll bring us up to roughly about fourteen percent of the portfolio. And we're roughly targeting as a portfolio mix hydro to be somewhere around twenty percent roughly. Just in terms of the risk profile and the renewable element of it, the non-carbon element, et cetera. So just kind of big picture of where we are. In this particular project here, I'm going to talk briefly about this one and ask for your approval. But this is what is currently being called plant number four. It's in eastern New York. It's another gravity. Gravity manages about seventeen different hydro projects. In the eastern part of the United States. This particular one is another, is another old one. It's a site that's been in place for about two hundred years. Originally it was a mechanical facility. The reason why we like this one, well, one of the reasons why I like this one in particular is as you get a sense from that picture, it has a massively wide surface area, body of water behind it. Which means it can, is that second bolt there, it can be more consistent in terms of power generation. So that's a particular interest to us in terms of managing the, the flow. This particular one, there's no known environmental issues. You're going to see a trend. Well, this is probably the last. There might be one more. We do somewhere down the road, but there are not many more hydros until some contracts expire. But just as we go through here, there's no known environmental issues, partly because of the age of these and partly because these hydro plants go through extensive regulatory processes at the federal level, the state level and the local level. So they are all extremely well documented. And I'll talk about a report we have on, on the DeHoa project after we walk through this one. But there's no known environmentals. We, of course, as part of the motion, we will do the due diligence that you requested to, for us to do on these hydro projects. We will do on this one as well. But we wanted to basically get approval to move forward. This particular one will be up for another FERC renewal, relicensing in a couple of years. And the volume is a nice size for us. It's about five percent of our total load. It'll have mass class two associated certificates. As you know, we prefer to buy energy where the certificates are associated. As opposed to buying on the open market certificates. This particular contract is twenty five years. Technically, it's twenty four and a half years. If we, if we got approval tonight, we will do the due diligence and try and execute a contract here this summer. So technically to be twenty four and a half years. I didn't have that in the slide. My apologies. The pricing is just slightly below our average portfolio. It's just a little bit below the other two projects in terms of pricing. Part of that's due to the fact that they're mass clue, mass class two associated recs and part of it due to the volume. Gravity, as you know, from our previous discussions. They're, they're passionate and very experienced in terms of doing hydro projects. They're well established, well known. We have existing contracts with them already. So they're a known entity for us. All said and done, this project fits our, our cost profile. It fits our load profile. It's got a low risk associated with it. And then so what we're doing tonight, we're looking for support and approval to pursue a, a contract on this particular one. The one thing that came up at the, the cab meeting, it's currently called plant number four. The reason why it's called plant number four, it does have a name. The reason why the gravity asked us not to provide the name, we do know exactly where it is. The reason being is they have been operating this plant for quite some time and their, the contract on this plant is expiring. Which is why it's an opportunity for us to actually pick up the power supply contract. But at the same time, gravity is going to try and, well, not going to try it. They're in the process of purchasing this facility as well. So for, for negotiating and confidentiality on their behalf, we internally call it plant number four. That's the overview. I'll pause for a moment for any questions and then ask if you could pursue the motion if, if you so desire.
Any question from the commissioners?
Yeah, thank you, Greg. I do have a quick question. I think you may have just answered it, but so the, the, the location is undisclosed at the moment for some kind of business proprietary reason or?
Yeah, it is. It is in eastern part of New York state. The supply to us will be picking up power in ISO New England. Yeah, so the, the location is, is known. It's, the plant's been there for two hundred years, but the gravity asked us not to disclose the actual plant name at this point in time. But we know, we
But I'm just curious why, but.
The reason, reason being Commissioner Talbot is there finishing a negotiation to actually acquire the plant. They've been operating it for quite some time and the current owner wants to divest this particular facility because it's not part of their direction. It's, it's the current owner is not a hydro operator. And so the gravity people are in the process of acquiring it and they're trying to avoid competition to buy it at the end of the day.
I got you.
We, of course, you know, we, of course, will do the, the due diligence on this one as well if, if we're approved to go forward.
Okay. Any other comments? Let me read, let me read the motion. The motion is that the board of commissioners vote to accept the general manager's recommendation to execute a contract after proper due diligence with gravity renewables for energy, including associated certificates with a hydro facility in New York known as plant number four on the recommendation of the citizens advisory board. John, you make that motion?
I did make that motion. Thank you.
Seconded? Do I hear a second?
Either way.
A second.
Okay, second by Mr. Talbot for the discussion.
Can I ask who seconded that?
Mr. Talbot seconded.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. For the discussion. All those in favor? Ms. Pacino, I.
Mrs. Stempak, I.
You, I.
Okay. Okay, great.
If I may also, before we move, before we move to the next slide, just a quick update. On the DeHoa project, that is the other New York project that you gave us permission to move forward on with due diligence. We are, we are, we basically, as of today, just completed the due diligence. We'll look at the report very carefully. But at the end of the day, no surprise. There's, given the significant amount of information available on that facility, like most of these. And anyways, the, the, we had a third party, basically an independent third party do a environmental, socioeconomic local due diligence and they came back basically with a clean recommendation. I'll walk through the details internally here, but at the end of the day, it's looking like the DeHoa project is clean in terms of the due diligence that you asked us to, to review. So we'll probably continue moving forward with that one as well. That's just a quick update on the DeHoa one. So I'm going to, unless there's any questions, I'm going to move to the next topic, which is renewable choice. Okay, so different topic here. What we started, we talked about, as you guys know. The policy thirty rev one, we had a provision for renewable choice. And there's a lot of different elements to this, as we've talked about before. So these, there's just three quick slides to kind of keep everybody up to speed. We're going to continue doing our research and due diligence, but as we discussed last, last commission, Commissioner Nita was able to practically bring us up to speed with some background on what Wellesley was doing. And so what we, we ended up having a chance to do is do a little bit more additional research on what the other MLT, MLPs in our Massachusetts area are doing. There are five that have a renewable choice program. And they're all a little bit different. Each is a little bit unique to reflect both the, the power portfolio of those individual MLPs as well as the rate base characterization, as well as the size. And I'm just going to walk As well as the rate base characterization, as well as the size. And I'm just going to walk through real quickly these five. We would be the sixth, the Belmont, Wellesley, Shrewsbury, Middleborough, Taunton, and then. If you were to put us on here, we would be the bottom row, which would be basically going from smallest to largest. We would be right below Taunton. Where our annual sales, those annual sales units, my apologies, that's in kilo megawatt hours per year. So just general size. We're at six hundred and fifty-one thousand megawatt hour a year. So we're a little bit bigger than all the rest of these. As you know, our portfolio is about sixty percent CNI, the balance being residential. That's contrasted with Belmont and Wellesley, which are primarily residential. Shrewsbury is is a mix. Taunton is more like us with a higher concentration of CNI. And Middleborough is is much more residential. Each one of those has some program. Each one of those is is looking the participation, they're all opt in. Just this is just a snapshot of what exists today. And they're all, if you look at the additional cost of each one of them. We gave you some details there. What I probably should have written in there is a percent of of cost of a typical portfolio. So. In the case of Wellesley, for example, that twenty-four dollars a month, if you were to go full hundred percent, and remember, the idea behind the renewable choice. Is to allow us, as we're thinking about it, and these other MLPs is to allow their rate payers. The opportunity to buy power that is one hundred percent renewable. As opposed to whatever threshold they're on. So you guys all realize that right now. Given the climate bill that passed. Everybody, all of us are supposed to be at least twenty percent. And you know that we're doing the annualized rate. So this year, twenty twenty-one, we're going to be at twenty-three percent. So all the rate payers will be at least buying twenty-three percent renewable. I'll say non-carbon to be technically correct, non-carbon power. Just for perspective on this additional cost. That that point two or that two cents a kilowatt hour is roughly about a fifteen percent premium over the regular rate for Taunton. It's about fourteen percent for Middleborough. And Wellesley, it's about twenty-two percent. So just to give you an idea. The customers that want to participate in this program are somewhere between fifteen and twenty, maybe twenty-two percent additional. To be one hundred percent renewable, just to put things in perspective. With me so far. But what Wellesley is doing, and this is what was. What will be basically put in place as of July first. Wellesley is going to offer a program called We Care. And that program is going to be consist or is going to consist of a four percent increase. To all of their customers. Except those that wish to opt out. And also excludes the colleges. As you guys know, there's Wellesley College, Mass Bay Community College and Babson College. Those are the three. Bigger loads within Mass within Wellesley, and they've got two office parks and the and the medical center. But basically, it's residential. That works out to be roughly about that four percent, just under five dollars a bill, a monthly bill increase. But that. We care program. The vast majority of those funds are targeted toward. Renewable energy projects. It is not focused on buying mass class one or any sort of renewable certificates. So when we think about this particular program, the the increase is not significant. But what we've learned in talking to the GM and the assistant GM is that that program is primarily putting funds for projects. There's fifteen percent of it that they've already allocated to a solar project, and we talked about that last time. So I just. But I wanted just to kind of lay this out for you to get so that you have a sense of what the other MLPs are doing relative to size and scope. Fifteen to twenty percent. Those are opt in. And that the Wellesley We Care program is not really the renewable program that we're thinking about. It is an opt-in program, but it's really a it's a project funding mechanism. I want to walk to the next slide. Let me walk. Let me walk through all three slides, then we can come back and talk about the any questions or discussion again. These. Am I supposed to finalize this? We're trying to just lay out what we've learned. As we're thinking about the RMLD renewable choice program. Again, our goal is the same, to try and offer a hundred percent option for rate payers that want to be their hundred percent, well, a hundred percent renewable or non-carbon. And you remember that we thought about last time about calling this a non-carbon as we got a little bit deeper deeper into the details, we concluded. That we ought to offer both because they're really different. There's the renewable choice. Which typically for all the other MLPs and how we originally thought about it, it would be focused on mass class ones. So retiring mass class one certificates. That would be different than a non-carbon choice, which would be a mix of non-carbon certificates. It could be a mix of effects all the way up to mass class ones. Remember. From our earlier discussions that effects are less expensive than mass class ones. Right now, effects are trading somewhere around a dollar fifty, two dollars, a dollar ninety-eight. I say trading, that's what they're valued. If there's not a big trade for them right now, mass class ones typically are around forty, forty-five dollars. Recently, they've been they're trading roughly around thirty-five, thirty-six dollars per megawatt hour. The the intention for us is to is to offer these two. We have more details to work through, but what will be consistent between the two of them is likely a one-year minimum commitment. As was mentioned earlier in the public comment, we want to make sure that these two choices are clear to the customers. So that they know what they're buying into. We want to make sure that we can administer it fairly on an ongoing basis. And we we basically envision, as opposed to leaving these variables, we envision, because there's a lot of variability in terms of the value of those certificates that are tied to these. Is basically let it be a fixed rate for a year and then make adjustments thereafter. The last point, just to mention that second bullet underneath the goal, as you guys know. The this goal to be a hundred percent is basically going from the twenty-three percent, which is what it will be for everybody this year, because we're retiring twenty-three percent of our certificates. And that'll bring it up to a hundred percent. Now, there's another subtlety in terms of the mix of whether it's mass class one or effects, and that's the difference between the renewable choice and the non-carbon choice. Anyways, what we want to just give you guys a little bit of sense of some of the more details that we're thinking through, and these are these are focused more on the residential. If you go to the next slide. I'm going to walk through the residential versus the commercial here in just a second, but on the left-hand column. Just to put things in perspective, this is our twenty twenty-one snapshot. And as you guys remember, roughly those two green bars in the lower left-hand corner are the certificates that we have currently associated certificates roughly about. Just around forty percent. And the top bar, the light gray bar are energy that we purchased without certificates. So roughly about forty percent of our of our portfolio has some sort of a certificate. What we are doing under policy thirty rev one is we are retiring this year twenty-three percent of those or twenty-three percent of the total number of certificates. Of the total number of certificates, that twenty-three percent. And we're going to sell the balance of them. So we're going to retire the first twenty-three percent and then sell the balance. Again, all things are covered the past two sessions. In terms of the two programs for renewable choice or non-carbon choice, the two mechanisms that we're thinking about, we're not thinking about, we're trying to work through the details of implementation. Is the retire more. Which is basically, we take, we we basically. Retire a larger portion. So that gray, that gold bar there. Would be the associated with the funds that are actually. Collected from the customers that want to be part of this renewable choice or non-carbon choice. And we'll take those funds and we will. Basically allocate those toward a retirement of a larger portion of the certificates that we have. That's the retire more model. And that typically will be what the resident that'll better fit the residential. On the far right-hand column, the buy more. Is basically, we would buy, which we don't do right now. We always buy certificates associated with energy. But under that model, the buy more, and this is based on some discussions that we've mentioned before that we're having with the. Two of our largest five customers, they would like to buy specific certificates. So we would actually buy those and then retire them on their behalf and give them a different kind of certificate so that they can fulfill their. Sustainability requirements at the corporate level. So those are the two mechanisms that we're thinking about. There's more details behind it, but I think the graphic here gives you guys a sense of what we're thinking about when we talk about. Retiring versus selling in terms of a renewable choice or a. Non-carbon choice. So those are the three slides that I want to just pause for a moment. Chairman, just to have any to, again, this isn't meant to be deep discussion, but if there's any comments or observations or thoughts, we can talk about those, and then we can move on to the last slide quickly. I know we're late on time. My apologies.
No, no, no need to apologize. Any question, any comments from the commissioners?
Greg. So in the first model. You said sell twenty-three percent and retire the balance.
I'm I'm so so no, I want to make sure I'm saying correctly. In that left-hand column, we're going to retire twenty-three percent, retire twenty-three percent, and then sell the balance.
Okay, retire twenty-two percent.
I'm sorry if I misspoke, yeah.
Greg, just a quick question. What's the what's the magnitude of the revenue that comes in from those sales from what you were just saying? From that bar? What's the?
Oh, in the in terms of the associated recs? Yeah. Yeah, it's about it's about a million. So historically, it's been about a million dollars per year, roughly. And and tradition and up until. Twenty twenty-one. The certificates that we have been purchasing, we've typically sold those. So. The dollars that were spent in the power purchase, those dollars were spent, and then basically from the sales. That was applied back against the power purchase. So basically netted out to be a neutral event, but roughly about a million dollars. I can get you more detail one if needed, but that's roughly the magnitude today. Today. Or twenty twenty.
So the light green is a million or the light green is a million less than twenty-three percent, so seven hundred and seventy thousand.
Yeah, so I I I think Commissioner Talbot, if you want to think about that associated recs, the the dollar value of that. Is roughly both the dark green and the light green is roughly a million dollars, maybe a million two. Roughly.
Okay, so since you're not selling twenty-three percent of it, it's the the amount of money coming in is less than a million, more like eight hundred thousand or something.
Yep, right.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, and 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 what's the next slide, we'll have to go to this topic. What's important to realize as we transition, so twenty twenty-one is the beginning of our upward path. Toward retiring more and more. We're going to we're going to retire three percent more every year. That's the annualized line that we agreed to do. You know, back in February. So the the concept here is just to kind of lay out the the mechanisms. And on the next slide, I kind of walk you through what the implications are in terms of our cost structure. It'll become right now. It's not a big, not a big number, just given the value of the certificates and the magnitude of the. The quality that we hold, but it'll become more significant over time, and I'll show you that in just a moment.
Comment?
Yeah.
And what you do is is give you what what? For like the last five years, just as it fluctuates, hasn't been. So we can we can give you that across the board like the last five years and then check the whole situation that you can see see what's going to be minus this way.
Colleen, we we can't understand you, I don't believe.
You're coming through garbled, Colleen. Yeah. Want to try again?
Still garbled.
Yeah.
Still garbled.
I might try going out and come back.
Okay.
If if you want, I'll go. No, just to keep things moving forward. There's there's a lot here, and we want to try and just keep sharing the thoughts and the. There's a lot here. If you want, I can go to the last slide just to put one more thing in perspective and then we can wrap up. So. At the end of the day, the key thing here, this is a twenty twenty-five snapshot. And what we wanted to begin to impress upon you is. If we think about the different, the five major blocks of the cost structure at RMLD. And as you heard from the previous session, right, there's the operating cost. That operating cost is. The the equipment, all of the distribution network, that's all of the stuff that we the labor, all the stuff that that is basically within our territory that we manage and operate, et cetera. And right now, that's about thirty to thirty-three percent, but over time, that will will go down a bit. Partially because it's on the right-hand side, you'll see the compound annual growth rate. So CAGR is compound annual growth rate. But the thing to point out and is that we have the other components, energy, transmission, capacity and certificates, and I'm not going to walk through each one of those in in more detail. You've probably got a sense of what those look like from prior discussions. On the left-hand side, there's a bit of a description. On the right-hand side, those are the levers that we use to manage those, and our goal. For energy transmission and capacity specifically, and it has been with the different programs we put in place, is to manage those down as low as we can for the benefit of our rate payer. So that's one of the things we do on an ongoing basis. The the point that I wanted to get across is each one of those grows at a little different rate for a whole bunch of reasons. But certificates, that top light green bar, that is, well, it's it's low right now. It'll be about five percent of the budget in twenty twenty-five. By twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty, it'll be almost nine percent. The reason why that is going to grow over time, roughly about fifteen percent compound annual growth rate. Is that the climate bill and our policy thirty rev one is requiring us both legally and policy-wise to retire more and more certificates. So that's part of the reason why we are very active right now, not only in terms of getting the policy. The renewable policy in place, but we're active in terms of purchasing the associated certificates and the long-term contracts. Now, we're trying to make sure we manage that. Over time, as Colleen has mentioned several times, because there's a limited number. Of non-carbon resources in our territory. And the load due to the climate bill will increase, as will ours. There's going to be increased competition for those. So that's one of the reasons why we're managing that. Managing our portfolio and looking for these long-term contracts very aggressively right now. We will always be doing that, but particularly right now. And the second thing is just to give you an idea that the certificate management is now going to become a bigger piece and a. A bigger piece of the attention that we pay to and we actively manage within within RMLD and IRD specifically. So. This is just to give you guys some background. Part of it, it's basically setting the stage for future discussion, but we want to give an idea of. How we're thinking about things. That's it for me, unless there's any questions or discussions.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the commissioners? So what's your next step, Greg?
So obviously, on the on the power supply contracts, we'll keep moving forward on those. We'll keep you posted, but we're we're moving as fast as we can. The the one thing that I did not mention is that while we said upfront. On the power supply and the power supply opportunities. We're looking aggressively for wind projects. We're looking aggressively for solar projects. We will probably bring a solar project to you that we've uncovered. At the next commission meeting for approval. And as you guys know, there's quite a bit of development in terms of large-scale wind offshore, and we're working through E and E. To to secure a portion of that as well. So on the power supply stuff, that's we're continuing, and we'll just update you on a regular basis. In terms of the renewable choice, we're going to continue moving forward. But if if we would like to have, I don't know the mechanism to do any. Working groups associated with the renewable choice and non-carbon choice. I know that Wellesley did that. They had. A combination of the the MLP and and external people involved in helping to think through that program. We're going to keep working on it, but I. We're going to develop it and make a proposal here over the next couple of sessions. I just want to keep you guys up to date on where we are. At some point, we're going to need to discuss, and you guys are going to need to vote on the opt-in versus opt-out component. But I think that'd be more appropriate after we lay out a little bit more detail with some specific numbers and then give you guys something to vote on. That's what I anticipate. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Okay. Comments from any other commissioners again? Colleen, you want to try again?
About now.
Yes, we better.
All right, so it'll be quick. Usually I'm at work, but it's I was on vacation, so I didn't want to miss this meeting. So. The last five years, it hasn't been a million dollars. It's kind of fluctuated on the rec sales. So at the next meeting, what we'll do is we'll put together the last five years, and then we'll project out. On that graph that Greg was showing you so that you have a clearer understanding of. I don't want you to think it's a million dollars minus the the twenty-three percent. So we'll put the numbers together in a graph. It was like one million one year, but. Let's look at the numbers a little bit more close so people understand. Okay, thank you.
Very good. Other comments from anybody? Not Greg, you you got more to present or you you all set? Okay. John, you want to add anything here? I know you you spoke earlier, John Rogers.
Just to say thanks. I I think that's terrific information, Greg. And I think you're you're asking, you're thinking about all of the right dimensions. I I do think, you know, I mentioned principles. I I do think. You know, I think it would help you in in even coming up with a draft design if if the board were to say, look, this is what we're about, and I I certainly think simplicity is part of the robustness or integrity. Communicability is is part of it because recs are not an easy thing for the I I know because I've been talking to the public about it for and my family for fifteen years. So I think. I think you're you're doing all the right things. So so thanks. And and that's terrific to see what some of the MLPs, other MLPs have done, and I'm really impressed actually by how low, I mean, you mentioned the Taunton one point nine. Cents per kilowatt hour marginal cost. That's. I'm not sure how they're doing it, but you might you might try to find out. You probably know, but that just. I'm not sure how they're doing it, but, uh, you might, you might try to find out. You probably know, but, uh, that just given, given what, I mean, what you said about what class, what, class one recs.
Yeah, that's a, that's a 14% premium of what they're doing, but you're right, there's, there's some missing dollars here somewhere, but you're right.
I think it's terrific. Uh, so thank you for those examples, because I, I think you're absolutely right. You don't need to reinvent the wheel. So, you know, take one of those models, make it RMLDs, and use that as the, as the starting point, I think. So thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, let's move on. I mean, Hameed, I think you're up next.
I'm sorry, yeah, I got two bids, that's all I have.
That's it?
That's it. Keep it short and sweet this time.
All right. So let me read the, the first motion, and you give us a kind of a, an overview, overview on it. Move that bid 2021-12 for Station 3, generator replacement be awarded to Phillips Electric, Inc. For $66,000 pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30, as Section 39M, as the lowest responsible and eligible bidder on the record general manager. John Stempak made that motion, correct?
I did, indeed.
It was, I hear a second, Dave Talbot seconded. Okay.
Okay, if, if you want the, the, the discussion about this, uh, we have a generator at Station 3 which is uh, supplying during the emergency conditions, if, uh, you know, it's supplying the power to the uh, switchboard and also the, the, uh, switchgear. Uh, so in order to operate the, the breakers and the relays. So we, the generator is old, and then we budgeted $80,000 in CY 2021 in order to replace the generator, uh, upgraded or replace it with a new one. So we send a bid to 24 companies, we received the response from seven of those. And, uh, uh, the company that they received, they actually, we met all the requirements, uh, was Phillips Electric, that they didn't take any exceptions. And they met all the requirements. Uh, the rest of them, they either took, uh, exceptions, or they didn't meet the requirements. So they did not qualify for the award. So it's right in the middle of the pack. They're not the, the, the lowest was 54,599. The highest bid was 73,827, and this one was in the middle of the pack for $60,000.
Okay. Discussion? Hearing none, I'll move to the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Ms. Pacino, aye? Mr. Stempak said aye?
Talbot, aye. Mr. Stempak, aye, sorry.
Yeah.
Eda, aye.
Okay, very good. Let me read the second motion then. Move that bid 2021-5 for tree trimming services be awarded to Meyer Tree Services, Inc. Pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30, Section 39M is the lowest responsible and eligible bidder on the recommendation of the general manager. Mr. Stempak, you make that motion?
I did make that motion, thank you.
Okay. Seconded?
Um, discussion on the tree trimming?
Yes. Uh, was there a second? Was there a second first?
No, I haven't seconded it.
Okay, you, you did second, or you did?
No, I did not.
Okay, is there a second to the motion? I need a second to the motion, we can't discuss it.
Uh, Bob's trying to second it.
Okay, very good, he's on mute, I didn't hear you. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, uh, thank you so much. Uh, the tree trimming contract wa, uh, is over. Basically, we have, we are into six months extension, so we cannot based on the MGL laws in Canada extend the second time. We send the bid out to 11 companies, 11 tree trimming companies. And we only got, we received a bid from one company, Meyer Tree Services. Uh, the rest of them, that you know, well, they did not respond. So we asked around to see that, you know, what was the really, the reason for, for that? And, uh, the reason was that, you know, well, basically, the re, reason that we got from only one, a, again, from the, uh, Meyer Tree Services. Uh, the rest of them, they didn't respond, because we sent email to them, that's why they didn't submit the bid. The larger companies who maintain the necessity, uh, certifications and the training for performing the electrical utility line clearance, clearance and tree trimming, uh, you know, as required in the bid, uh, they're all supporting places such as California uh, for the wildfire, so they've moved on to the, to, to the west. And also the demand, another reason was that, you know, the demand for tree trimming services is in particular high due to the increased regulatory requirements, uh, and, and also along with major storms, wildfire, and invasive pests, which all drive the demand up. And the third reason for that being that, you know, this is a skilled work and physically demanding, and, you know, they, they, there's a shortage of the, uh, skilled labor uh, in this field. So as a result of that, we only could, could secure one, uh, bid, uh, one response. And that was Meyer Tree Services. Uh, another thing that, you know, I like to explain was that also, uh, the prevailing wages rates, uh, compared to the last con, contract, almost doubled up. It's gone up by, you know, uh, 124%. Uh, because the tree trimmers, there is a classification i- in the Labor Standard Act, the Massachusetts, uh, Executive Office of the Labor and Workforce Development. So they removed that tree trimmer classification. Uh, as a result of that, the labor went up, uh, 124%. Uh, from 22.06, went up to $49.52. So the labor is up. And what we did, uh, we, uh, in the, uh, in CY 21, we budgeted $751,951.50. So, uh, this is going to be a three-year contract. So if you multiply that by three, that's going to bring it up to 2,255,854.50. The last contract, uh, the total amount for the three years was $2,201,000. So it's up a little bit. What it means, the labor went up, the, the prevailing wages went up, almost doubled up. Uh, so, uh, we are trying to stay within the budget. We might have to increase the tree trimming budget for the following years for CY 22 and CY 23. But for now, this is the estimated amount. You could see in the back of actually this, uh, the estimate that, you know, what we are estimating. Uh, we're thinking that, you know, well, the total, uh, spending would be uh, 1,625,331. Again, this is the estimate based on the typical, uh, you know, jobs. So not necessarily this is exactly what, what, what's going to happen, and this is how much we're going to be spending. Uh, it's got, it's going to be more, this is just for comparison b- basis, you know, that we sent to all three trimmers, uh, the co, the companies in order to fill out and get, tell, give us the rates. So we know what we're dealing with, uh, during the year uh, for the labor and the material that they, they use. Any questions?
I missed, I didn't understand the beginning of what you said about why there are so few bids. Um, I noticed it was out for less than 30 days, but maybe a longer period of time would have helped more bids come in, but you said something about California?
Yeah, the, the, one of the reasons that, you know, we got back, because, you know, they're not, are larger companies participating, is that, you know, the Cali, California wildfire, and most of the major big companies that they have large equipments and, you know, lots of, uh, labor, skilled labor, uh, to do the job, that they have, uh, apparently, uh, sent their crews to the California, uh, for California Edison, and also you PG&E, Pacific Gas and Electric. They're paying them more for the labor than the east side, so that's one of the reasons. But, uh, the other reason also with the COVID-19, what we, uh, understand, that, you know, they lost some of their skilled workers, even for other, you know, trades. So, uh, there is a shortage of this skill, staff. Uh, also, another contributing factor is the certification. You know, in order to, uh, get the labor, skilled labor really certify them for the, the, the line of work that we do, because it's dangerous. They need to be certified by OSHA, and they need to have training to work around the electric lines, and all of the certifications that they need to get. You know, they don't want to invest that kind of money. Uh, some smaller companies, so. And there are smaller companies that, you know, well, you know, they, they could possibly have participated, but they needed to make sure they, you know, they're not lowering our standards uh, in the interest of the safety. So they could have poss- possibly, uh, participated, but again, we want a large company that, you know, they have resources available, especially they come in handy during the storm seasons, that we might need m- one or two or more, uh, tree crews in order to respond, uh, you know, in a short period of time, within, uh, half an hour, ten, an hour. Uh, so we can restore the services to the public, you know, faster, in a safe and expeditious manner. So, uh, these are the requirements that, you know, some of the requirements that they were in the bid in order to make sure we get the right parties. And we had only one. Did I answer your question?
Yes, and in other years, did you often only have one response also?
No, previous years, no, we had more than one response. And again, it came back to the certification uh, for the safety, and some of them, they didn't meet the requirements, uh, because of the safety and because of the training, the amount of training that they need to. Yeah, one of the, one of the requirements also, because we have lines along the ra- railroad tracks, and, you know, they need to all be certified by QLIS. QLIS is the company that is watching railroad track and anybody in, being on the tracks, they need to be certified by QLIS. So have you taken these certifications very seriously, because God forbid for liability reasons? God forbid if there is an accident or something happens, and reliability is going to be on, uh, their liability is going to be on us. But we want the liability to be on them. So to make sure nobody gets injured while they're working for us in our service territory.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Hameed, that answered some of my questions too. Uh, my, my, can you just repeat, what is the change, like, for the annual amount from what it used to be to what it is now under this new bid?
Okay, the change is basically in the last three years, uh, you know, we budgeted for, uh, 7,000, we budget for the span, we pay per span. Because the last time, the previous contracts, we used to pay for labor and material. And we found out that, you know, we're better off, we're saving more money by, uh, awarding the bid per span. So we don't have to, you know, chase them, and we don't have to make sure that, you know, well, they're putting the right amount of hours, the labor and material for us, so, you know, less supervision. And this company is really great, they're doing a great job for us, and, you know, they're very honest, but it's still, we need to make sure that, you know, well, they, we needed in the previous contracts, to make sure that, you know, they, they, uh, that, that they're honest about, you know, the, the paperwork and everything, we needed some, you know, administrative work for, for us. Uh, so in the previous years, the last three years, uh, we budgeted for 7,702 spans. Okay, that's what it, and this, uh, this year, uh, I mean, because of the labor went up, uh, we're bu, we are, uh, budgeting for, uh, 3,525 spans. But that, those number of spans might go up next year and the way, the year after, which we're going to come to the board again, and we'll ask more money for the, the tree trimming, because we don't want to compromise our uh, reliability by spending less and cutting less. Uh, but we'll see how it goes. This year, uh, again, like what I said, the first year that, you know, the cost went up, the labor, and the Department of Labor, uh, removed the, the status of 323 services, uh, which almost doubled up the money. We're paying off the almost $50 a, 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 an hour for the, uh, labor. But they, they might be paying more money to them, might be paying 60, 60, but this is the minimum that based on law, by law, they're going to have to uh, pay their skilled labor. And some of the, uh, smaller companies, they don't even want to pay that kind of money, so they pay less money. And when you put, uh, one of the conditions as they have to meet the, uh, labor standard, uh, uh, standards and pay the minimum wage by the, uh, prevailing wages. So they don't want to do that, so they don't want to participate. That's another thing. Another contributing factor why that they don't participate. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, but the bottom line is the cost doubled, right?
Yes, exactly. Exactly.
And you see no way around it?
There's unfortunately, there is no way around it, no. This is the law, I have, uh, actually, I can email it to you if you want, on February 18th of 2020.
Yeah, and, I, Hameed, I think Dave is asking, last, the last three-year contract was 2-point-something million, and this one is 2-point-something million.
Yes.
Right, Dave, you want to know the difference?
Yeah, but, but it's half as many spans is what I'm getting, right? Same money, half as many spans.
Yeah. We, we're going to have to, for the, for the, actually, we go, we, we're going up by $55,000 for the next three years compared to the last, uh, three years. But now we're going to have to cut back if we're going to spend that kind of money, because the labor doubled up, so we have to cut back on the number of sta, spans that, you know, uh, we're going to be performing, we're going to be doing. So from 7,700 to 3,500. But like what I explained, I think we might have to go, depending on how it goes this year. So we might have to go, uh, up, uh, in 2022 and 2023. Uh, uh, ask for more money for tree trimming, so just a heads up.
And there's no bringing it in-house, the cost doubling for contractors, there's no bringing it in-house?
No, we can't do that in-house. Obviously, you need to be certified tree trimmer and, uh, an arborist. And, you know, these people, they, we don't want to do that, our guys. We do the minor stuff, our crews, they're doing whatever we can do. But the major, like, they're removing the hazardous trees, it's not just cutting the trees, it's hazardous tree removals. You know, these are the ones that large pine trees that they're coming down during the storm, and, you know, they, they're causing the major damages to the lines. So, and then you need to be certified in order to, you know, do that type of work. And, you know, our guys are not just certified for doing that, you know.
Okay. Well, I also think there's equipment that's involved, right? I mean, it's definitely major equipment that you have, uh, that's not, non-trivial, so it'd be a significant increase in capital that we have to spend.
That is correct. For the cranes and, you know, the choppers, wood choppers and all the stuff that they need to do, and plus, they need to take them to uh, certain facilities that, you know, they can accept the wood chips. Now, you know, the, the, even the restrictions on those, they go up. So they need to be certified to make sure that, you know, they're not just cutting trees for the sake of cutting the trees. So there's a lot involved.
Yeah, if I may, I, I mean, I don't like it either that it's doubled, but I given, given that, uh, our re, our system reliability is a direct function of getting these trees cut, I, I think it proves us to just move forward. I mean, if you look at the price of lumber, it's gone up by a factor of three.
Right.
Right, in the past year. So many things have been COVID impacted, unfortunately, and, uh, hopefully we can address it as we go down the line.
Bob, did you want to say something? I saw you, you had your hand up. You want to say something, Bob?
Can, yes. Just to put it in perspective, like, I'll run a storm, I'll have 50 tree crews sitting on the side. And that's asphalt, and that's like six or seven different companies, and reding lights competing with that. So it, you're, you got, you got to pay. These got, now, now, even we have a hard time as a, as a IOU, getting tree crews. They're, they're leaving, and, and it's very hard to get qualified to get these technicians to work in the electrical space. It's, it's hard to get them, it's hard to find them, because they can make money not working in the power, power space. They can make a lot of money, they could stay away from it, and then when something like that happens, they call the, they call the power company, like, hey, you take care of it, because you have to. So that's, it's real, I, 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 I see it. So just to put it in perspective.
Okay.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
All right, is there discussion? If not, it looks like we're ready for the vote. Ms. Pacino, aye?
Mr. Stempak, aye?
Talbot, aye.
Eda, aye.
Mr. Gold, aye.
Very good.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, we're up to, uh, Brian Hatch. Okay. So let me read the motion, and then we'll get some explanation. Move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the general manager move forward with the RMLD new production environment with disaster recovery project as presented. Staff w- will solicit quotes from the state contract and award contracts for the project not to exceed 240,000 in calendar year 2021. This unbudgeted project will be paid from the depreciation and operating funds. Mr. Stempak, you, you make that motion, please?
I did make that motion, thank you.
All right, seconded? Do I hear a second? Mr. Gold, the seconds, okay, very good. Let's get a setup and a discussion, go ahead. Who's presenting? Who's presenting?
I'm present, I'm presenting, my name's Brian Hatch, thank you, uh, Commissioners, for your time. Um, uh, I was brought on to identify and, um, um, basically assess and comprehend what was going on in the environment and to understand where our data assets were and how we were protecting them from, um, different types of attacks, from ransomware, from hackers, from um, viruses, et cetera. Uh, and it looks like we need to, um, upgrade our systems to put us in the best possible situation and to, um, find a place outside of Massachusetts that will allow us to, um, have access to our data at a moment's notice and to be able to get there uh, in a very quick, uh, turnaround type of time. Um, so the four things I'm going to run through with you, um, are we're going to identify a disaster recovery location with connectivity, uh, the ability to perform essential backups. Uh, because right now we're not getting a complete, um, backup set. Um, and we're getting close to the, um, compression levels that are not going to be able to get us a nightly backup. Um, we're going to implement, uh, restoration of our RMLD data under the new disaster recovery plan. Um, and we're going to incorporate fault tolerance for our data protection scheme. Um, so Plan One is identify an off-site, um, place, it would be called a co-location. Um, that's basically a very large data center that would, uh, we would rent some space from and we would take, um, some of our equipment and we would repurpose our current environment. Um, and then we would put it out into this, uh, co-location facility. And then we would start getting nightly backup sent out there. Um, and that would happen here in Phase Two. So after we had, we identified a DR location, we would then, um, buy two different backup systems. Now, why two? Um, one is we need to have good quality backups for at least thirty days locally on site in case something failed, had a problem, was attacked, um, similar to what happened about a year ago. Um, it would give us protection, it would be encrypted. Um, any data and, um, any data in motion and any data at rest would be encrypted and protected. And, um, it would take two different systems, one here and then one out at the disaster recovery site that we would pick. Um, and again, I have to hold some information back because it's the public forum. And if I open up that information and give you more of it, uh, it could open up to different attacks or giving, um, the public uh, more information than necessary so that we could become a target. Um, Phase Three of that is bringing, bring in a new production environment so that we could, um, future-proof ourselves for the next four to five years and make sure that we're protecting the data that works now in our current environment. And then we have the ability to scale and grow. Uh, right now, we do not have that ability. Um, the equipment that we're currently using is no longer, um, sold. And, um, as of next year, will no longer be supported. Um, so it's very important that we make sure that we are kind of staying with the trends, we're not buying the Bentley version of this equipment, we're buying the solid Honda Accord, Toyota Camry type of basic, um, high quality, um, but not crazy expensive computer equipment. And again, this will protect us from different, um, types of attacks in our data assets. Um, as of Phase Four, we'll also do something else for us, it works in a way like a DVR does at your home. So for example, we would get nightly backup up here at Phase One. When we identified our DR site, we would take our two different backup, um, systems and we'd leave one here in Reading. We put one in the DR facility and then we'd have them replicate every night to each other. That way, we have thirty days here and then out at DR, we would have, you know, uh, one week. And then we have one, uh, the end of each, uh, week, and we have the end of each month, then we have the end of each year or quarter, and the end of each year, et cetera. Um, and then we would have a new production system and we'd be repurposing our older equipment. And we'd be putting it in DR, so we're not wasting money or we're not throwing away good technology. Um, and then at the same time, we could use Phase Four here for that DVR concept. If we found out that a virus came in at two o'clock in the morning and it was affecting our performance. Um, and it was five days later, we could go back five days and seven minutes later or eight minutes later. And we could say restore all the data in the environment back to that point in time, so we could verify that there would be no ransomware attack or anything like that happening to us and we could go back and we could protect ourselves from them. Um, with, with that, um, there comes a certain amount of cost, obviously, you can look at the ends here and they do add up. We would need some external services to work with the IT team to help this get implemented. I have implemented similar types of, um, schemes like this in the past and they've worked very, very successfully. And I've had, um, people legitimately up in minutes where they could roll over from our data center in Reading. And they could roll right over to our data center and pick a location somewhere in the middle of the country, but that would be the idea, somewhere in a, the middle of the country, in a different environment. Um, and a different weather pattern from what we have, um, up here in Boston slash Reading. So Phase One would be, um, the basic, um, cabinet or rack, as we call it, we would put our repurposed equipment in there. And then we have a connection out there that would help replicate our data every night and every day. And like I said, so it would be nightly and it would be, um, minute by minute. Phase Two would be, um, the, uh, two data, two data off-site backup systems. One here for Reading, they make sure that we had thirty days on site. And then out in DR, we'd have a week or so or longer. Um, and then we would bet we would keep monthly, quarterly, yearly backups out there for as long as necessary. Um, Phase Three, um, we would need to buy four new production servers with storage in them. And it's, uh, designed for our exact purpose. And that would be a hundred and eighty thousand. And Phase Four would be that DVR, which is actually a part of the original purchase or this purchase right here in Phase Three. Um, but I feel it's a very important phase because it does give us that minute by minute backup for a solid month, where if there was a mistake, a problem, an issue or a concern, we could roll back comfortably. And we'd know that our data in our production, our IT production environment is safe and secure. So, um, like, uh, I believe you mentioned, it is, um, it was unbudgeted, um, budgeted, um, but, um, we've been discussing this internally, we've spoken to several experts. Um, I've mentioned that, uh, we've, I've architected this several times in the past and I feel it's absolutely, um, uh, necessary to, to take the, um, this type of company and move it forward and future-proof our systems. And that's it?
Comments from the Commissioners?
I had a question, Brian.
Yeah, of course.
Um, if I may, the, um, had you, uh, investigated, I'm sure you, you have, just looking at companies who would outsource this, uh, for us? And the only reason I ask that question is because when we, when you buy equipment, especially computer equipment, the depreciation is like three years, right, on the equipment? Because
Yep. Yep, laptops are three years, this equipment would be about five.
Fun, okay, three, five, but my point is that technology reigns supreme in this world and, uh, it goes, uh, out of shape. So if someone else is responsible for it, they have to maintain the equipment and whatnot, I, I'm sure they pass that along, I'm sure you've seen that. Uh, so did you do a comparison of physically going more to outsourcing as opposed to us actually purchasing equipment and putting it in place?
Of course, uh, um, done the due diligence on that, we've, uh, worked with, uh, several different vendors. We've looked at AWS, we've looked at Google and we looked at, um, if you can, one Azure, um, and they would do it for us. Um, the cost on average from an operating point of view would be right around three hundred thousand, um, a year. Um, and again, after going, I, I think it would be right around a year and a quarter. We would match that with, uh, purchasing it outright and then having the remaining three and a half years. Uh, more or less free of charge, but as we both know, it's not free of charge.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just as an aside for data storage, uh, had you looked at Wasabi at all?
Um, I did not look at Wasabi, I looked at, um, I went through Gartner and Forrester. And I looked at the top, uh, ten, um, people in that environment.
Right, and, and I don't want to I only mention it because Wasabi is, uh, as far as a data storage company, they're mentioned by Gartner now, they're actually captured on their charts. And they're about, uh, one half to one third the cost of, uh, Amazon or any of the large ones. And they don't charge for acquisition of data or storage of the actual, actual input and output of data, but they're plug compatible with Amazon. That's the only reason I mention it is because if we could save a significant amount of money by doing something that's generic like that, it might be interesting. It was founded by David Friend, who founded Carbonite.
Yep, I know Carbonite well, or the, and I don't want to get into the specifics of the technology, but, um, uh, yes, we've looked into several alternatives to going to cloud, to hybrid cloud. Um, at the end of the day, you can't truly be, um, a cloud operation, um, you have to be a hybrid cloud operation, so.
Great, thank you.
For this, Bob? Go ahead, Bob.
Hi, hi Brian, a quick question, you mentioned connectivity, uh, is there going to be, uh, new data connections, TLS lines that are going to have to go to these vendors that you're going to have a recurring monthly fee as, on top of, uh, this cost or is it incorporated into the cost?
Um, it's incorporated into the cost. Um, and we are actually, um, working with Verizon now to see if we can even incorporate it into, um, another purchase, um, so it would be even cheaper. But at this point right now, it would be a dedicated line, uh, direct connected to that, uh, DR location.
Okay.
And as you, as you know, with the five year away, there are more costs, so we would definitely make sure we were outside of New England. Somewhere between five hundred to a thousand feet inland. About five hundred feet, five hundred miles to about
Yeah, 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 everything, yeah, just my, my experts, everything goes down to New Jersey, right, goes through Cambridge, down to New Jersey, right, someplace, that's, that's where it all ends up, but wherever, you know, but.
Okay, thanks. There's about, there's literally about ten thousand different places. Um, and, um, so we, we have our choice to kind of pick where we want to go, um, so that's one of the benefits.
Thank you.
All right, further discussion? Seeing none, we ready for the vote? I guess we are, so, all in favor, Ms. Pacino, aye?
Mr. Stempac, aye?
Yep, Mr. Colter said aye.
Talbot, aye.
Talbot, aye?
Ed, aye.
Okay, very good. Okay, very good, we're up to scheduling, before we go to the executive session, just a quick I forgot to mention it, that, uh, Monday night, uh, Bob, myself and Greg, we attended the Green Communities, um, meeting with the Board of Selectmen, got an update on that. Um, so, um, and what they're doing on that going forward, so we actually got on sometime in the middle of the night. Okay, I'll probably hear about that one from somebody. All right, so, um, in terms of the next meeting, we've talked about the, uh, review of the General Manager's goals, that'll be sometime till the end of June. Uh, our next meeting would be July the twenty second. Is there any problem with, anybody have any problem with that meeting on July the twenty second?
No, is this our May meeting or a June meeting?
Our May meeting. It'd be our May meeting, the, the meeting in June would be just to, uh, the one to talk about the goals. The General Manager's goal. Okay? Nobody's got a problem with that meeting, that, so. Erica, you'll, you'll schedule that meeting for us, okay? And then, uh, the CAB, I guess I'm up for the CAB on the next time around, so just let me know when that, that's going to be. I guess that probably will be in person, I would imagine too, at that point, the governor's, they're going to get renewed. All right, is there anything else we got for open session before we go to executive session? Speak now, okay? So, um, to go in executive session will be the, the motion, the motion I'll read. A move that the Board of Commissioners go in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter one sixty four, Section forty seven D, exemption from public records and open meeting requirements in certain instances to discuss competently sensitive issues regarding options for purchase power, power supply and consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property and return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
He took the words right out of my mouth, though.
Okay. Is that seconded? Bob, seconded?
Same.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night now.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentations.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good evening.